He left me, um, he called and I was in his seat, he left my voice there.
I don't even.
Because, um, he asked for counsel.
Yep, here we go, rock and roll. We'll, we'll throw it out there and see what happens. Roll the dice. Roll the dice.
Yeah.
See what happens.
I was in his seat.
Oh, this month, oh, this month, zip mine. Get you out the house twice in a week, Sal. I dug it, man. We're gonna have to put you on payroll.
Please. Don't delay. I should get a call in two days in a row.
You like that?
Huh?
You like that?
I just, I couldn't figure it out.
Hammond City Council, public hearing, August 11th, 2020, roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Public hearing none, will roll into our regular session, roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
I'll ask for you to stand, stand for a prayer and ask Councilman Andrews to listen.
Most gracious, loving, eternal, heaven and father, we just thank you, Father God, thank you that this is the day that you've made, we shall rejoice and we shall be glad about it, Father God, we ask you to continue to guide us, continue to bless us, keep us from all hurt, harm, and danger, Father God, we ask you to continue special prayers and blessings upon the citizens of Hammond right now, we look down upon those that have lost loved ones throughout this pandemic right now, Father God, and we ask you to continue to strengthen their hearts, strengthen their minds, we ask you, Father, that everything tonight will be done decent, order, and pleasingly in your sight, where you will get all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, we ask you to continue to bless our first responders, our fire department, and our city police department right now, Father God, that they continue to protect and serve us, ask you to continue to bless this council, right now, continue to give us strength and the peace and the knowledge to continue to move forward, but not only that, Father, continue to bless our city administration right now, Father God, continue to give them the wisdom and peaceful knowledge on high, as we have to continue to move our city forward in the days to come, for that, we give you glory, honor, and praise and thanks, in Jesus most holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Now for our pledge, I ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Council reports.
I have one report, uh, this Saturday at, uh, nine o'clock in the Thunder of the Pavilion at Martin Luther King Park, uh, me and a team will be accepting small water bottles and refillable water bottles to donate to the schools for the students that are returning, they will not have access to water fountains when the school starts back, so to be able to make sure that they have water on campus that they can get to and access, we'll be taking in donations to give out to the, uh, lower elementary schools here in the city of Hammond. And also, I would like to, uh, make a comment, uh, from on the meeting on last night, I think that meeting went rather well, it was rather, uh, informative meeting, it was good to see that the citizens came out and voiced their opinion on how they felt about the things that were going on in the city and in their neighborhood, and I would like to encourage those of you, uh, that are listening, uh, that are not here, to please try to start, uh, attending our council meetings and try to follow on, on what's going on, to be better, uh, educated on the things that are going on in the city, uh, Sam, that was, uh, well, put together meeting on last night, and I think that it was rather put together with the information that was out, and the citizens did come out to support.
Who else? Stan, Devon? Now for the mayor reports.
Uh, just a reminder that the millage renewal election for police and fire is this Saturday, August 15th, voting is open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and a reminder that this is a renewal, it is not a new tax, it's for 10 mills of 10 years, which is their exact same terms of what we pay now, this does go to support police and fire salaries, equipment, trucks, vehicles, fire stations, police stations, and training, so all of these are vital services, um, that come from that millage renewal. Today, as a follow-up to the meeting that was held last night, the mayor sent a letter to the Louisiana Housing Corporation with a link from last night's hearing, uh, we also sent that on DVD to make sure that they received it, but we did receive confirmation from them, um, I sent to the council what I located today, which was another meeting notice posted today for a meeting tomorrow, to discuss the Hammond Station Apartments, which are proposed for Southwest Railroad, um, we have no information about them, other than what the legal notice was, so I sent a public comment, I was able to get that in and express that, you know, this also came up at that meeting last night, and the developer called shortly thereafter and said he was going to be sending us a fact sheet, so hopefully we'll get that tonight, we have asked, um, LHC to table the matter, but it's up to their board, so the, the board meeting is at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, and I sent that all to the council.
You sent that for the borough apartments, too?
The borough apartments has already gone through their preliminary funding, I sent that resolution to the council once I found that on the website.
Okay.
That, that I sent a couple weeks ago, I believe. Other great news, though, for the city is that we are closing out the 2020 fiscal year, um, in a COVID year, this is actually pretty astonishing, we are going to close out the fiscal year $435,000 ahead of the sales tax budget, um, numbers, and for Video Bingo, which also goes to all of our capital outlay projects, that just goes straight to capital outlay, we're $135,000, um, ahead of what we had budgeted, so great news, uh, for the city of Hammond regarding that. That's our report.
Very good, thank you. Now for a minute, so July 28th, 2020, need a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept our July 28th, 2020 meeting, by a minute from that meeting.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Uh, resolutions, old business, none, new business, number one, a resolution to approve budget change form 21-01 to consolidate funding for Mooney Park, specifically transferring $125,000 from Mooney Basketball Court and $75,000 from asphalt project, I'm sorry, asphalt parking improvements, and $110,000 from the Mooney Restroom Project to Mooney Park Improvements.
This is the budget change forms 21-01, excuse me, it's the first one that's been done this year, uh, in this fiscal year, I should say, as you know, we've had a number of different appropriations here and there from Mooney, we finally gotten it all put together, Devon and I and the mayor and CC have all met, we kind of consolidated into a plan to get those improvements built, to get them built as quickly as possible, so what this right here does is consolidate those various years appropriations into one project fund, the first project that'll be moving forward will be the prefabricated restroom building, which the city CC is handling that in-house, to save us some, uh, obviously some professional design fees and some other things, and that'll be bid, I think, on the 18th, CC? August 18th, I think they take bids, so at the next meeting, you'll be awarding that, and once that bid's in place, we'll move forward and get the parking lot and the basketball court built, and all the sidewalks around it, so this is a consolidation of funds into, um, the Mooney Park Improvements Project. Anybody specific questions or questions?
Does that include with the, uh, problem with the previous restroom that they were trying to tear down?
It's gone, I mean, it's, it's gonna be gone, is it gone now, Devon, or is it still there?
No.
Still there, it's not used, it's boarded up, it's out of service, so rather than repair, they're gonna put a nice concrete building there that's indestructible, uh, it's gonna have automatic lights when the doors open, it's gonna have automatic faucets in it, it's gonna be pretty much state of the art, and fairly indestructible, I mean, concrete walls, concrete roof, so we'll replace it with a new restroom, and similar in style to what's already at Kate, I mean, at Zemurray, and at Jackson Park, and at Clark, similar style, but this is not an architectural project, this is a project we picked out of a prefab restroom building companies that build these things and ship them to the site and set them on a slab, so it's like a turnkey deal, and the city's handling that in-house.
No, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Question, uh, the question I, I was having about the money, because I think it started out as $73,000 for the asphalt parking lot improvement, but I see them with the $75,000, am I right?
Probably, we really, we did, originally the project was one big asphalt job, it was gonna be this new parking mall down by, uh, Kate Street Station, and that together, built together, so I had really never separated them, I just was gonna bid it all as one job, and that's apparently not gonna happen, because the railroad hadn't given us permission to build it, so I wanted to carve the Mooney Project money out, so it's $73,000 or $75,000, I don't really know, know why it's different, I must have figured it a second time and got a different number, if I figured it again, I might get a third number, but it's in that neighborhood between $70,000 and $75,000, was specifically for the Mooney Park Project.
Yeah, you had called me today.
Yes, sir, just to let you know this was on the agenda.
Yes, sir, you had called me today.
Where everybody can hear me, and we was talking, you was telling me about what's on the agenda, because I kept asking questions Friday about this whole, this entire project.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't get an answer until yesterday, and...
Asking questions of me?
Uh, well, about this whole project itself, about Mooney Park.
Okay.
And I think, uh, Lacy, you had answered the question.
On the budget, you were asking questions about the budget.
Yeah, about, about Mooney Park, and so I had talked to Mr. Chuck today, Mr. Chuck was telling me, he didn't find out till today that this was gonna even be on the agenda today.
He sent it in Thursday, so...
Yeah, he sent it in Thursday, but the problem that I'm having, even I had put something on the agenda before, and I think I sent it in on a Tuesday, and didn't find out until Friday it gonna be on the agenda, so in the process of doing it, and I know it's too late now, in the process of doing it, I think is, you're not giving us enough time to do no research or see what's going on, what's going on the agenda, and I know you don't have nothing to do with that, so I just wanna bring that up.
So we're looking to change the Thursday deadline?
No, no, I can't do that, I was just voicing my opinion.
Well, I think the council did establish the procedures for that, so that's...
Yeah, well, we're not gonna get into that, because, uh, I see where you sent something Friday, so we're not gonna even talk about the deadline, thank you, Mr. Chuck.
Is there anyone here in the, in the public on this matter? Any other questions from the council? Pleasure to the council. Devon says this is Mooney, do you?
Y'all make a motion.
You wanna make the motion? Okay.
My second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve budget change form 21-02 to transfer $245,000 from drainage improvements fiscal year 2021 to sidewalk and drainage improvements fiscal year 2020.
Yes, ma'am, you may recall when we bid this project out in April, that I included an additive alternative to do work on South Cypress Street that was requested, that took a trunk line from West Morris, East Morris, all the way down to the Outfall, I think it's at Park, either Mary or Park, one of those two streets down there, I don't remember the name, those bids that come in, this funding that we approved in, in July 1st, we'll fund those improvements, so that's one reason, and the second $15,000 is for, there's work at STOA, uh, is, I don't know what STOA stands for, but they're building a brand-new bill, uh, office complex on the corner of Cherry and East Morris, and they have drainage concerns that they have for them, as everybody in that area does, you know, they've got water in those buildings, and they've asked that the city run a trunk line down from that half block, so there was $15,000 approved in the budget, this, this current budget, and then the $230,000 on Cherry Street, excuse me, I got it wrong, $15,000 on Cherry, $230,000 on Cypress, so I would recommend, recommend we approve this to consolidate into that fund, then I'll come to you with the change order when that time's appropriate.
No, Chuck, the remarks, I think on there, I think it was like 1.6 million, I think 1.3 million, I think on there, on, on, uh, the little remarks tab, when you click on it, on, on the home line, yeah, in the remarks, let me see that, I don't have it on, right there.
Oh.
Okay, now, like, all, all of this current, that, has that work all been, been done for?
That work's under contract.
Okay, so that one...
It's just started.
Okay. And that all includes what, that, the 1.1, that, that includes sidewalks and drainage, uh, throughout?
All over, Pine Hill, Freddy Lane.
Okay, oh, that's all grouped into that?
That's one big project, it's like a half a dozen locations.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone here on this matter? Pleasure to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thanks, Chuck. Number three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a John Deere 6120M tractor and rotary cutter for $131,597.14 from Louisiana State Contract, using the airport capital request appropriation of $70,000, and matching with $61,597.14 in airport grant funds, David Laboue.
Good evening, everybody, uh, the, uh, the matching, uh, grant funds, uh, are from the CARES Act grant that the FAA gave us, remember I came to you, that's $157,000 total, so we'll still have, uh, a little bit left of that to do some important, uh, upgrades at, at the airport, but we are, uh, we're in the middle of the summer right now, we're hurting, uh, trying to keep up between the rain and the, and the cutting time that we have, uh, we need the second trap, tractor and bush hog desperately to get, to get caught back up and, and to be in compliance with, uh, FAA and state, uh, requirements for, for aircraft safety at the airport.
Questions from the council.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, when the last time the grass been cut out there?
I actually had guys working, uh, like, working overtime the entire weekend, so we had somebody out there, I had two guys out there today, um, it's pretty much five days a week.
Okay. How many acres, how many acres y'all actually cutting out there?
It works out...
I keep hearing 900 acres?
Yes, sir.
But how many acres y'all actually cutting out there?
If I had, if I had to guess, I would say it's in the 800 to 850 acre range, uh, one of the things we do is we maintain all the grass inside the airport fence, uh, it, it's hard, it's hard to picture unless you look at a top-down, uh, picture of the airport, exactly what it, what it's like out there, but there are huge expanses of open field areas going to the, to the northwest of the airport, as you move off of the runway that way, we've got grass on the south side of 190 that we have to maintain, we've got grass on the north side of Vineyard that we have to maintain, because these are all approach areas into, uh, into the runway, and then, of course, we have that grass area to the northwest, uh, as well.
Okay, now this is what I, uh, ask you another question, okay, the tractor y'all buying, it's a state contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, have y'all ever tried to get a, get it without doing a state contract?
I don't think, I, I'm talking off the top of my head, but I don't think we're allowed to go outside of the state contract when it comes to purchasing, uh, I, I'm not sure about that, though.
If you, if you don't know, just say you don't know, because let me tell you why I asked this a question, I asked this a question, because yesterday, I said, let me do some research on my own, so yesterday, in the process of me doing some research, from the tractor that I see that you all have on here, uh, I went to John Deere, and I went to Kubota, in the process of going to both places yesterday, the price I come up with, now this the price I come up with, and this what I, this the question that I asked, I told them I was a city council, and I need to know the price on what it would cost me and my family to purchase this here tractor, so at John Deere, they come up with $152,242, now, it's not a state contract, and so I went to Kubota, the same identical tractor that you all have, well, you all have a, a John Deere, this is Kubota, the same identical tractor, they priced me a price at $100,000, this without tax, now, of our financing at Kubota, the tractor cost me $104,000, so I said, okay, then, well, give me the city contract on how much it'll cost me, so at John Deere, I mean, at Kubota, the tractor would cost, uh, it was a $25,000 difference from the $131,597.14, so I just wanna know why we spending $25,000 difference for this, and then the math might can answer, because I see them made it in, why we spending, and it's just the math that I come up with, it's a $25,000 difference from a John Deere to a Kubota tractor, and I just wanna know why we spending $25,000 more?
Better quality tractor.
Okay, so you said...
For the application that this tractor is doing, I talked to everyone that cuts grass on the interstates, particularly a local individual. The entire state of Louisiana, for the most part, runs John Deeres all day, every day, cutting with the mowers, it's not about, in this particular case, and I understand what you're talking about, but it's a better quality tractor, the horsepower coming out the back end, handling a 20-foot mower, it's a better quality tractor, that's talking to people that do this every day, I'm not discounting what you're saying, now, John Deere makes a tractor that's a model down that, to compete with the Kubota, but we're looking for something that's gonna last and we can run, we've had the last, the tractor, the Kubota that was running, we've had it broken down twice, when I say broken down, I mean, the case pulled apart and worked on twice, we spent over $15,000 on this particular tractor, just with those two applications, not including air conditions that unfortunately are not a good quality item in these tractors, constantly broken down, passed by the, uh, airport Friday, our guy sitting out there with the door open, and granted, we don't buy tractors for air condition, but if it's part of the package, they should work and we shouldn't have to deal with them, another quality piece with this tractor is, if there's another part in Thibodeau, or wherever it is in state Louisiana, we don't have to pay freight on it, it'll be next day delivered, so that's, that's the explanation for that.
Thank you, ma'am, yeah, well, I still look at $25,000 saving, but you sat there and say John Deere is better than Kubota, but I wanna know, we got Kubota all over the city of Hammond, and I know you don't have nothing to do with it.
Well, and as I told little Charlie, 99% of our business comes from them, we do a lot of business with them, we also have Michael Canow and Sons that have zero turns, John Deere's been here for three years, local company now, pays taxes, property taxes, sales taxes, it's a local business, these other ones aren't local in this town, I do understand, look, love the Cielinas, love the business there, but this particular application is the one we need for this, 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 uh, situation at the airport, running all day, every day, it's a good quality piece of equipment, I understand what you're saying, we try to do as much business as we can in, in town, it's not that we're gonna stop doing business with Kubota, the sidearms, from what I understand, on the side of the interstates, Kubota, that particular tractor apparatus is okay, but when you running in high grass and you pulling, and look, if I'm selling a Kubota, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna sit here and tell you why it's the best piece of equipment, uh, the little guy, I, I had Hunter try to call you back, he said you, you...
Yeah, I talked to him today, yeah, I talked to him, yeah.
So, I mean, we try to cover our bases, it's nothing personal, strictly business, I'd rather spend $25,000 more than spend $25,000, $30,000, $40,000 down the road fixing a brand-new piece of equipment.
Okay, 'cause, uh, this is my second time hearing this, 'cause, uh, the fire chief, he even brought it up, asked about the fire truck, and he sat there and said the same thing you pretty much said, sometimes it's not always best to go cheap, so...
Yes, sir.
So I just want, I just wanna keep getting this on the record, of what you all keep saying, because I look at it like this here, it's not our money, and by it's not being our money, and the reason I'm saying this here, 'cause when I asked for something for Mooney Park, and Mooney Park been behind for 15 years, the city haven't spent one dime on Mooney Park in 15 years, and every time I ask for something for Mooney Park, it be delayed.
Sir, since you've been...
Please, please, let me talk, please, I didn't interrupt you, and so I keep asking this a question, and it's nothing against you, Mr. John, I keep asking this a question, because every time we look, if I see his money, there's no problem for nothing throughout the city, let's not keep the pride of these kids in Mooney Park of a park, thank you.
Mooney Park has been on my list to get done since I've been a mayor, since you've been here, we have been planning on Mooney Park, we're getting ready to spend, what, $300,000 in Mooney Park, and make it a premier park, we've done Jackson Park, we're getting ready to go in Jackson Park and do a, a gazebo, we are spending money in our parks, we spent money in MLK Park, I'm all about kids and all about the parks, and you know as well as anyone that we're gonna be in Mooney Park, and we can make a top-notch, uh, park there.
Anyone have any questions or comments, sure, come on up, I'll state your name and address for the record.
My name's Elizabeth Lafar, I live at 601 Roushans, Hammond, Louisiana, 7043, and I would just like to ask the question of Mr. Wells, do, am I recalling correctly that you were the person who made the motion to remove the expansion of Mooney Park from the city's budget this year?
Ma'am, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Lacy, can you answer that question? There was some land that was, had been negotiated to be purchased?
Oh, that was some land at Zemurray Park.
Zemurray Park, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Wells.
If we had another person who wanted to speak, come on up.
I'm Chris Perry, resident of LaRonde, however, I'm also the general manager at Pierce Aviation out here at the airport, and I want to commend Dave and his guys, they have been really working extremely hard, trying to keep up with the grass out there with the, with the quality of tools that they've got, and it's frankly kind of rough, I'm, I'm watching them sweating their butts off every day, but I wanted to let y'all know how it... But I wanted to let y'all know how it affects us when we have higher grass. I've had, as a pilot, I've had to go around in one evening four times because there was coyotes on the runway. The grass was too tall. They weren't able to get out there and cut because of the, the problems with the mowers. We have, uh, we've got more birds. When the grass is higher, birds pop up when you take off, and you end up with problems like bird strikes in jet engines. We've got eighteen jets out there just in, just in our hangars. Anytime we have a bird strike, it's a five-to-ten-thousand-dollar problem. If you've got something broken in that engine, it's a million-dollar problem. We've had that twice in the past. So we need that grass cut and looking like a, a green at a golf course. Because we've got people's lives depending on it. It's not just about it being a jet engine. It's people's lives in those jets. It's neighborhoods just on the other side of the airport where they may end up having to go. So give them whatever tools they need. Thank you.
It, it may have been stated earlier, and I apologize for being late. I will say, remember, you left us with seventy thousand dollars in account for the tractor. We were blessed to be able to get a hundred-and-fifty-seven from the federal government for maintenance at that airport. Now, we're taking that money. We asked the FAA if we could use it for the tractor instead of using our own lighting. So we won't get as much lighting done this year. We'll get some, but we'll get the other half of that tractor paid for. And it's not with city dollars, it's with federal dollars, respectfully.
And they've, and, and they have already pre-approved that, that purchase?
That's in writing, right?
In writing, yes, ma'am.
There's a question from online media. What brand of tractor did we have before now?
The, if we purchase this John Deere, it's gonna be working side-by-side with a Kubota tractor and bush hog. The one that is unreparable right now is a Kubota and tractor, tractor and bush hog. The, uh, and, and, you know, it's not to say that it won't be a Kubota the next time we need, we need another tractor and bush hog. But for right now, I believe that this is the right setup for, for what we, what we, what we have out there and what we need to, what we need to cut.
Yeah, I heard the pilot say, I assume he a pilot, that, uh, yeah, y'all, when y'all get through, y'all gonna have it looking like a golf course, huh?
We try to do that all the time. The problem is keeping up with it.
Yeah.
So sometimes you have to go back over it a second time, third time even.
Dave, I think you had emphasized that it takes nineteen working days to cut the entire airport area.
That's, uh, that is five days a week, eight hours a day. The way it ends up working, because as you can imagine, there's maybe twice, if we're lucky in a good year, three times the entire year where you can go nineteen days of cutting without rain. And, and you think about the rain. The rain comes, an area bogs down. So it could take days for that area to, if it's a heavy rain, to dry up again and, so you can cut it. One of your workers gets sick, a piece of equipment breaks down, um, then you don't have that nineteen days anymore. So that, so the time that we have to actually cut, we have to take advantage. I, I had, I had a guy working overtime this weekend with the one good tractor and bush hog that we've got right now just, just to try to, and it's like, it's like spitting in the wind sometimes, uh, to try to get caught back up. We've got more rain coming tomorrow.
And to have a tractor this size, when it is dry, we can get in there and cut more area than what we were able to cut before.
Yeah.
No, the reason I'm asking, 'cause this was going on, and taking nineteen days, eight hours a day, I just told it up. That's a hundred-and-fifty-two hours a month that y'all cutting the grass out there. And I'm glad we talking about this here tractor, because you know what? I want the same conversation when it come to District Three, getting the grass cut on how many hours, please, on how many hours it gonna take to cut the grass, because, see, this what I need to know. It's nothing against you, uh, Mr. John, I think?
David.
David, Mr. David. It's nothing against you, but I'm just saying, I want the same passion. I wanna hear these same conversation when it come to District Three, getting the grass cut, 'cause the coyotes, we ain't got, can't, we don't, we got to be careful of the coyotes because we don't wanna hit them. I don't wanna hit no dogs when we cutting grass in the Mooney area, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I take it very seriously, the liability issues for myself, for the mayor, for the city, for all of us, even for the taxpayers, if something were to happen and we were to, we were to be in any way at fault for not keeping up with something that we're supposed to keep up with, which could be, it would be disastrous.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any public comment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to appoint John Philip Noceriano to represent the Fire Department on the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term from July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty to July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Mayor.
Uh, John was voted in by his peers in the Fire Department, and I respectfully request that you accept his nomination to the Civil Service Board.
John here tonight?
He's, he's here. Anybody questions from the council?
Would John like to say anything?
He's, he's been, I'll, I'll brag on him. Uh, he's the captain with us. He's been serving the Hammond Fire Department for over sixteen years. There were three candidates total in the fire side of the elections, and so he was the candidate that came out on top. And we're excited to have him want to be fulfilling this duty.
I have a question. See, he ain't have nothing to say. John, only so, boy, you gonna be fair with everybody that come before you all?
To answer that question, um, yes, uh, guys that know me, you can ask them if it's right, it's right, it's wrong, it's wrong. Doesn't matter my opinion of you or anything. If it's right, it's right, it's wrong, it's wrong, no matter who you are.
Yeah, well, I had already asked questions about you. And from what I gather, everybody say you're a good guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion approved. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to reappoint George Bergeron to represent the Police Department on the Hammond Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term from July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty to July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three. Mayor.
Same with George. George was on the board previously. His peers re-elected him because apparently he's done a good enough job and, and represented him well. So once again, I respectfully ask for your reappointment of George Bergeron to the Civil Service Board.
George, do you have anything to say?
No, I don't have nothing to say. Well, of course, I know, but I don't have anything to say.
Lacy, do you have anything?
I have some stuff to brag on George about. He is a lieutenant currently with the Police Department. He's been serving the Police Department for over twenty years. And he has been valiantly serving on the Civil Service Board for three years, and then went into an election with two other candidates, came out on top, and said he would double down and serve again.
Good deal. Make a motion approved. Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
I'm gonna make a real comment real quick. Lacy, did you say earlier, did the mayor, did y'all, did you write a, a opposition letter for the housing development for just one of those developments, or did...
Well, we let them know that there was concern about both.
We, we wrote it about both.
Both?
Yes.
The borough?
And the Hammond Station.
Okay, that was included, the sixty-four unit borough project?
Yes.
Okay, in the opposition letter, okay.
It was a letter that stated that our priorities, as expressed in the meeting, are for home ownership.
Yeah.
That was stated multiple times, rather than rentals.
Okay.
And so the letter focused on that. It also said that we encouraged them to reach out to us and give us a contact who could help us with more home ownership programs. Um, we invited them to come to a council meeting and present to the council the resources that they have available for that. And, um, and then we just said, we need better communication going forward about all these projects.
Did you email that letter to us?
I did not send you the individual letter. I can scan that to you.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Make sure we got it in.
That sixty-four, yeah. Exactly. I just wanted to make sure the borough was included in that, so that's it.
You didn't say an opposition, though, right? That's correct. As a public, as the city does not officially oppose it. Because we don't officially have all the information about the project.
But you stress concerns of opposition from the public community.
I said that the public expressed concerns about the project and about its proposed location.
Okay. Thank you.
Final adoption, I'm sorry, can I...
Well, since I opened that door, I just had one question dealing with that, with the, is there, I know what they talked about and mentioned about the master plan and, and all of that stuff on last night. When will there be another meeting, quote-unquote, with this, with this master plan from when it was put together to...
We would have to do that.
We would have to do that to go back to reass, to reassess, okay.
Form a committee or some type of action to reevaluate whatnot, so...
So would you be willing to do an opposition letter for, for that development, the sixty-four, mayor, the, the borough?
We talking to them about the concerns. We're gonna meet with them possibly tomorrow. There's a meeting tomorrow. So we're letting them know what the citizens said yesterday.
Okay.
And we're letting them know we like better communication with us before something like this comes. And we let them know what the concerns were as far as, let's do housing projects. Where people, just like Lincoln Park, just like by J.W. Davis, those are tax credit programs. But in ten years, fifteen years, they turn them over supposedly and allow these people to buy these homes in both of those, those projects that they built. So that's how those projects work. And encouraging that to happen if it happens rather than part of complex, which wouldn't be sold individually to homeownership.
My stressing of not using, of not using opposition is that we, as the city, cannot take that stance.
But when you send a letter, it doesn't have opposition.
Okay. That, that's, it's not that I'm for this, against this, or whatever, because it's not up for us to vote on, but we have to be careful.
We understand.
Okay.
Audrey was, was a part of it.
Good. All right. Final adoption of an ordinance, none. Introduction of an ordinance, none. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.